Four o'clock, so I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item on our agenda is approval of minutes from our five four twenty twenty one regular meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all was in favor of, or I need a motion, excuse me, to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay, Councilman Lowen moves, Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three oh. We'll now move to agenda item C, approval of vouchers. Today, we have manual checks in the amount of forty seven thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, thirty two cents. Computer checks, ACH, in the amount of eighty nine thousand, four seventy four oh nine, for a total voucher approval of one hundred thirty seven thousand, two hundred twenty four dollars, forty one cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
Make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will now move on to public comments, Mr. Styles.
Okay, so we've got a few people I know who want to make public comments. We've got Mr. Rickenbaugh here from Butler County Community College. And then we've also got Zach from EBH here as well. So there doesn't appear to be anybody else on the call at this point, or on the Zoom or in the room. So we'll let Mr. Rickenbaugh go first, I think, and go from there.
Well, great. First of all, thank you very much for this time and opportunity to talk with you. What I wanted to visit with you all about is the Kansas Promise Scholarship. That's a scholarship that was passed by the Kansas Legislature back in this last legislative session, and it was signed into law by Laura Kelly on April twenty third. It's basically a ten million dollar program that provides scholarships to Kansas residents that are graduates of Kansas high schools, or are Kansas residents that are over twenty one years of age. It's a last dollar in scholarship. So let me, I'll explain a little bit of that to you. The Kansas Scholarship is basically, will cover books, tuition, and fees, and any other expenses that are directly tied to a student's educational cost, except for room and board. So anything that's a direct educational expense, the Kansas Promise Act will cover, after they have looked at all other kinds of aid. So the first thing a student has to do is complete the Kansas, or the FAFSA, which is a federal application for student financial aid. I don't know if you're all familiar with that. But basically, all of that information for dependent students is based off of their income and their parents' income, if they're under twenty three years of age. If they're over twenty one, or an independent student, then it's just off of their income. And then, basically, the federal government determines whether or not you're eligible for any kind of grants, or loans, and then the Kansas Promise Act would fill in after that. It's available for individuals that have a individual income of less than a hundred thousand dollars, or a family of, you know, parents that have a adjusted gross income of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less. So, and then if you have more children, the higher your income can be. But if you have an income of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two people, you're not going to qualify for a Pell Grant. If the student does not have any scholarships, then this Kansas Promise Act is basically going to pay for their tuition and fees, and their books, and any other directly related educational expenses for their first two years of college. The whole goal is to, for them to be able to get a technical degree. And then the goal is for them to get that degree and stay in the state of Kansas to work. After you utilize the Kansas Promise Act Scholarship, you're obligated for two years to work in the state of Kansas. If you transfer on to a bachelor's degree program, after you complete your bachelor's degree, you're still required to live in the state for two years, or you have to pay it back with interest. All of those details have not been worked out yet. The federal, or the state, state of Kansas is still even working on the application. But we're out in trying to get information out to government agencies. Obviously, we're presenting to all of the high schools in the school districts in our service area, so that they're aware of the scholarship, and they can present that to individuals that might be interested in going back to college, or are interested in getting a technical degree of some sort. Right now, the overarching areas of program eligibility are information technology and security, mental health and physical healthcare, advanced manufacturing and building trades, and then early childhood education and development. Butler is also submitting another program for consideration. Until that information comes back to us, though, we're trying to kind of keep that in the rap, so that we know what the state's going to do with it in the Kansas Board of Regents. I sent, Matt, I sent you a flyer, and I don't know if you've had a chance to print that off or distribute that to your, your others in the body. But if you need me to email that out again, I'd be more than happy to, so all of you have that information. But like I said, it's the last scholarship dollar in. So if a student has a scholarship, say a five hundred dollar academic scholarship, that comes out first. Whatever else they owe, the Kansas Promise Act would kick in. There are some people that don't like filling out the FAFSA. I've worked with parents that say, I don't want to, I don't want anybody to know how much money I make. I understand that. The Kansas Promise Act requires that they fill out that form. And I try to tell parents, the colleges have to keep that information confidential. The only other people that knows is the federal government, and they already know. So you're really not sharing it with ever, other, a whole lot of other people. So really trying to encourage people to fill out the FAFSA, see if they're eligible. And then if they're not, then the Kansas Promise Act will kick in. And it'll, it's a great opportunity for students that will struggle to, you know, to find finances available to go to college. And we're strongly encouraging people to look into this opportunity. It starts this fall. Like I said, the federal, or the state government passed it, the House and the Senate passed it. They are not educators, and they don't work in financial aid. So all of the details are left up to the Board of Regents and colleges and universities to figure it out. So we're trying to get all of that information together as quickly as we can. But it is going to be available starting in the fall of twenty twenty one. So with hopefully COVID subsiding and going away, hopefully, face-to-face classes at Butler are going to happen. We still are going to have some online classes, and it applies to online classes. So if students are in Hillsborough and are taking classes online with Butler, the Kansas Promise Act would still kick in for them. They do not, you do not have to be a full-time student, as long as you're in six hours or more, you'd be eligible for the scholarship as well. So people that are, you know, single parents, or full-time moms, or dads, and are, you know, are working part-time, that can only go to school part-time, again, this is another great opportunity for them. So I've probably talked enough and bored you to tears. Any questions that you might have, I'd be happy to answer.
I will say, Bill, we did pass around the flyer, so everybody has had a chance to look at that. And we can put some out in front and distribute those to whoever would want one. So we'll have that information here in City Hall for people.
Great, appreciate that.
Yeah.
So Bill, this is Lou Thurston. You said something about a program that you're not ready to speak about yet. But as, as you, as Butler County develops, develops new programming or augments programming, we'd certainly want to hear about that as well.
Certainly, you know, as soon as, I mean, we're still working on a couple of technical programs to get started. If we get those programs started and then approved, they would probably automatically be approved by the Kansas Promise Act. And we'll get that information out to you all and to everybody, so that they're aware that this program is, is another program that we're starting up at the college.
Well, just, just so you know, we've been working, this, this body has been working on developing a strategic plan for the city of Hillsborough. And our, out of our strategic planning, we've identified three, our most critical three, three areas that we're working on right now are workforce, housing, and childcare. So, you know, in terms of training, you know, for, for workforce opportunities, in terms of, of housing, which, you know, would involve trades, learning, and things of that nature. And then, of course, childcare, and, you know, there's, there's other things that kind of branch off from that. Certainly, mental health and, and things like that. In terms, when you're talking about families and dealing with, with that kind of stuff, is, is critical to that as well. So I just wanted to put that out there for you, so that as these things develop on your end, you kind of know what's important to us, or where we're needing help. And maybe that helps you identify areas where we could plug in together.
That, that's great information to have. I'll share that with our, our vice president's group when we get back together and let them know. And as, as these plans get finalized and approved, we'll certainly, our plan is to continue to communicate out to the different agencies and organizations that we're presenting to, so that you all are up to date with where we're at. This is just the first of, I hope, a series of presentations that you'll hear on the Kansas Promise Act from Butler, and what we can do for, for our service area.
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate you taking time to meet with us and, and let us know about it.
All right. Well, thank you for your, for the opportunity to present it to you. I appreciate it, and y'all have a great day. Stay dry. I think we're getting rain down here again.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe stay dry is not right. We haven't had that much rain. So I just don't want the nine inches that hit in Atoma.
Yeah.
No doubt.
So y'all have a great day. Thank you again for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
Have a good day.
Okay, Mr. Styles, do we have any other members of the public?
That call, it's here from EBH.
Let's give a, a quick update on the hiking bike. We were kind of discussing it before we got started here. The hiking bike is completely finished as far as concrete and the ADA deductible strips, those are all installed. The other thing we have left, if we can get some, kind of hit on the rain again, if we get some dry weather, be able to finish that backfill, get the cedars in here, and then that project will be completely wrapped up. So I think it's really exciting. I've seen, as, as you mentioned, I've seen a lot of people already out there using it. So it's, I'm sure there's a lot of folks excited about that. Just for the highway job, if you haven't been up there, they, they do have that industrial intersection is completely ripped out. And they have west of industrial, that dirt is all cut down to grade. And same deal, we're just waiting to get some dry spore, where we can start bringing the rock back in to put the, it'll be six inches of, of rock that'll go in there. And then as soon as that's done, we'll get that concreted. So that job will really start moving along quickly, once we can get some, some dry weather to cooperate with us. So that's pretty much all I have, unless anybody has any questions on, on any of that.
No, it's looking good. I keep, keep checking on it myself and driving up and down the streets. And, and man, it looks great.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Doesn't look like we have anybody else, sir.
Okay. All right, with no other members of the public wanting to be heard, we'll move into our business section. And we will begin with agenda item E one, which is lagoon improvement, equipment purchases, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, thank you, sir. So sorry to have this added at the last second, but it became kind of apparent that we needed to, to move on it a little quicker due to some supply issues, potentially increasing the cost. So we've seen a lot of that happening kind of nationwide with various things. But at our last meeting, we talked about the improvements we were proposing at the lagoon with the adding aeration and baffles. Alan Luttrell was here to, to talk about that. And those two items, which are a large chunk of the project, are in growing, going to be going up in cost, apparently. So after talking with them, you know, we've got some quotes. They, they did shop around for these, both with the aerators and with the baffles. And they've got mul, they talked to multiple different companies. So these aren't just single-source kind of bids. So what we ended up with was the baffles from Enviroco Inc. at a cost of thirty one thousand nine fifty, nine hundred and fifty, and the aerators from Aerolater Corporation at a cost of ninety two thousand, six hundred and, six hundred dollars. So the total today that we would be asking for to get purchased would be a hundred and twenty four thousand, five hundred and fifty. That comes from the sewer fund. And so what we would propose to do there is, we, we are going to have to amend the budget in order to, to use the funds that are in there. There's over a million dollars in there. Excuse me. So financially, you know, from a financial perspective, from a cash perspective, we're okay with it. When we originally talked about this project last year, we didn't, we were anticipating financing it, because we didn't have a very good price on it at that point. So going away from the financing, looking at paying cash, so it's not in the budget for this year. But again, we'll have to amend it to do that. I also want to note that we were working with Barkman on this. They've been very good to work with, very, very helpful with this. And I just want to make sure that everyone knows that they've been cooperative, and they, we kind of have, have come to some agreement. We're still working on it. We're going to be developing an agreement with them to spread the costs over thirty six months, so that they can pay us back in kind of chunks there. And that's, we'll present that to you when we get to that. But I think they're receptive to participating in this project. And I just wanted to highlight that they've been very cooperative with this project and good to work with. So the current fund, like I mentioned, the funds will come from that. This is also potentially a project we can use, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, ARPA, call it ARPA. It does fall into that, and it does appear to meet those qualifications. We still haven't received that funding yet. They told us initially that it would be last week. Hasn't shown up yet, so we're still kind of waiting. The guidance that we've gotten on that is basically to, to take your time with it. You've got a couple of years before you have to spend it, and just make sure that you spend it appropriately and within the guidance. So that is something that potentially we could do with that money. So that is another consideration here. But I would suggest we pay for, at least this project right now, we would need two separate approvals on this, out of the sewer fund, with just the cash we have on hand. And the rest of the project, we would pay for the same way. The total probable cost at this point is two hundred and twenty eight thousand, six hundred and seventy. So it's a fairly decent-sized chunk, but the sewer fund has enough cash on hand to do that. So, so what we'd be asking for today, in order to, to avoid a cost increase, would be to purchase the baffles from Enviroco Inc. at a cost of thirty one nine, thirty one thousand, nine hundred and fifty, and to purchase the aerators from Aerolater at a cost of nine, ninety two thousand, six hundred and twenty.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the purchase of baffles, as described in the quote, "for the wastewater lagoons from Enviroco Inc. at a cost of thirty one thousand, nine hundred and fifty."
Make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will ask for a voice vote. All was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three oh. We'll now move on to the second item, which is, accept a motion to approve the purchase of aerators, as described in the quote, "for the wastewater lagoons from Air Oh Later" at a cost of ninety two thousand, six hundred and twenty. Would somebody care to make that motion? Okay, Councilman Garing moves.
My second.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three oh. And we'll now move on to agenda item E two, engineering services agreement, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is the agreement we proposed with EBH. It outlines basic services that they would provide, along with established price listing for the basic services. There's no retainer in this agreement. It just requires that EBH kind of has those guide rails with us, as far as what the costs are. And it also requires them to do task order agreement in order for chargeable services to be billed to us. So this avoids confusion and helps kind of keep, keep that relationship nice and clean. And there was an agreement, I, I wrote it in here, that it automatically extends. It's not actually an automatic extension at the end of the year. We have thirty days prior notice, we can extend it per year, but it doesn't automatically do so. So that was, that was an error on my part on that. We have a not to exceed figure in there of twenty thousand for the expenses for the year. That matches up with what we've got planned in the budget across all the departments. So that's a pretty normal thing. And then if there was a project-specific thing, say, like this, this project with the wastewater lagoons, they'll have a separate agreement for that, that would be treated separately. But built at the same rate, just treated separately from that twenty thousand. So I haven't heard any comments back from EBH against it. So we're, we're going to assume that they're, they're good with it. They haven't said that they aren't at this point. So they've had a look at it for a few, few weeks now. So we're, we're prepared to go forward.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Styles? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the proposed engineering service agreement and authorize the mayor to sign.
Make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. We'll now move on to item three, pad foot compactor purchase, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So one of the things that the street department was asking for, because we've got a lot of building, potential building projects, including the community plaza, and potentially some work we would need to do on the EMS station as well, was for a compactor, it's a self-propelled, so you, you can ride on it. It looks like a giant, it's like a sheep's foot kind of drum, self-propelling vibrating drum that's for packing. I should have put a picture of it here, I forgot to do that. So they had asked for that, and we had gone, and they had looked at a few different ones. Normally, what we would do is have you guys approve this before we did it. But we went on an auction, it was an auction situation. And so normally, one of these things, a newer version, would be about seventy five thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand. So I authorized them to go up to thirteen, and they ended up at twelve five. I don't really like auction situations for this specific purpose, because now we're basically asking for forgiveness instead of permission. But you still have the opportunity to back out if you didn't want to make this purchase. I just want to make that perfectly clear, that it's, you know, normally, we would go through you guys first and then go out and do it. But with the bidding and the timing and the auction, that process didn't really work exactly like it normally would. So I think it's a pretty good piece of equipment. We're going to use it fairly regularly. So we're asking for basically ratification of this purchase and approval to go forward on that. And the costs would be divided between street, water, and sewer departments, which would all be utilizing this for compaction of different pros, different projects.
Are there any questions or comments?
Does that take the place of the old one they used to haul behind the tractor?
Yeah, this one's self-propelled. I, I can't answer that. I don't know. I don't know if they've got that or not. But this is a, yeah, this one's self-propelled. Yeah, it's, it's an older unit, has less hours on it than you'd expect, but it, it turned out to be pretty good. They went and looked at it, it was out of the city of Chapman, I believe. You know, the steering was good on it, the vibratory stuff worked really well. It didn't feel like it was out of whack in any way. It's a pretty well-taken care of piece of equipment. So they went and vetted it. It wasn't like they just, you know, bought it off auction, because I've, I've sold stuff on those auction sites, Purple Wave and things like that. And, you know, people from California and Arizona buy them sight unseen and just, you know, and sometimes don't even come pick them up. So it's one of those situations where we actually went out and looked at it and said, okay, this is, this is a decent piece of equipment. So, yeah, I think it will be a pretty, pretty nice piece.
You can get it back here.
We're going to trailer it back, yeah. We're not going to drive it, yeah. Going to have to trailer it back, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the purchase of the self-propelled pad foot compactor at a purchase price of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Garing moves. Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three oh, purchase is approved. Item four, city health insurance renewal, twenty twenty one, twenty two, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we've got our renewal back from Freedom Claims Management. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we decided to, to move forward with the Freedom Claims Management plan. So what that is, is basically going from a fully insured plan through Blue Cross and Blue Shield to a, a partially self-insured plan, where the city administers its own plan and buys a high deductible plan through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So what that, that does is give, you know, we have to insure up to the deductibles and things under the high deductible plan. But what we're able to do is to match the benefits that employees have now, and then take the money that we would save between the two plan costs and run our own plan underneath that. So that's kind of the, the real quick highlight version of it. So with the proposed model, going with a high deductible plan, the premium was twenty-two percent lower than the previous one that we would have been renewing. And so what that means is that we'll be paying Freedom Claims Management to administer our plan, and then we'll have five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents for about sixty-seven thousand dollars a year to run our own plan. So that money, instead of going to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, goes into an account, which we use to pay our claims against the city's policy. And so what that ends up doing is, you know, based on that, you know, having that ability, we would have to have twenty-three, twenty-three people hit their liability cap under the city's plan in order for that to be, you know, that, that would max us out. That would be hitting the top end of what we could do. We currently have fifty-six people, so a little bit less, well, right at half would, or not quite half, excuse me, a little less than half would have to max out their benefits, which is generally not going to happen. The actuarial, which is what they use to kind of predict those things, are estimating that we'll have four people hit that cap. So anywhere between four and, and twenty-three, we're good. If, if we go over the twenty-three, we have, we have a pretty bad problem, other than, other than the financial piece. So that's a lot of people hitting a lot of liability. Then we would have to add more money into the plan. That's a pretty, pretty low risk, based on what we've seen, and based on kind of claims data that we actually have access to. So what we're asking for is to renew on, on the high deductible plan, and then using that money that we've saved to, in, to run our own plan underneath that. So from an employee's perspective, everything remains unchanged, essentially, Blue Cross and Blue Shield. They get the same network, same covered providers, cost employees remain the same, everything will be the same for next year. So nothing changes there. We're actually going to increase the benefits, because we're planning on upping the life insurance benefit from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, and then adding a telemedicine service, which is pretty low cost to our, our plan as well. So that, they're actually improving a little bit. And then the, probably the thing that's the biggest selling point for me, anyway, is that Freedom Claims Management gives you a dedicated person, claims representative, to work through all of our claims with, and they'll also advocate on our behalf with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, if we ever should have an issue there. So you get a live person in Great Bend, who will actually know who you are, and will actually advocate for you. So I think it's going to be a pretty solid improvement. The only drawback, the thing that we've, I've, I've seen when I've put this plan into place other places, is that you have to have two cards, double insurance card. And so people struggle with that, at least initially. I think most of the time, people get a hold of it pretty quickly. But it's one of those things that that, that will be changed, and that will be hard for some folks. And so that, that will be the biggest factor, I think, in this.
Just parasit for retirement.
Yeah, right, exactly.
You got three cards in my pocket then.
Yeah. Yeah, and my, most providers are used to dealing with that. So most of the time, it's not the providers, it's the people, it's your employees. So.
We do.
So this is, that, that is the proposal we'd have for you this year. So the motion, or the, the action we'd request then would be to propose the health insurance through Blue Cross and Blue Shield and, and Freedom Claims Management. And then we'll have the mayor sign off on that stuff. So any questions? I know that's kind of a, it's kind of a big concept to unpack, but it's really, it will ultimately.
You explained it to us, what was a couple of. You explained it to us what was a couple of months ago.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, uh, this is just the renewal. It's that time. We're planning on having, assuming, assuming we have some insurance, we're going to have open meetings for enrollment on June first. So that's two weeks from today, so.
Do the employees know this code?
Yeah, they've been warned. I, you know, ultimately, ultimately, I think they'll like the system better. Again, it's just going to be transitioning to that two card thing. That's what's going to get people.
Well, for our employees, I think, you know, for me, you know, that it's important that we have good insurance, good benefits for our employees. You know, it's, especially these days when everybody's fighting to get good people. You know, it's important that we have the right benefit package that, uh, that gets us the right people and keeps our people, you know, feeling good about working for the city. And so as long as, as, in my mind, as long as we're continuing on with, uh, you know, matching the benefit and even adding some, some benefit to it, I feel good about that. And I think it's a fiscally responsible way to go about, you know, hold, helping hold down our costs. Because I think it's, I think you had in here that it would have been another ten grand more, a little over ten grand to re-up what we had. So, I mean, you know, the, the potential is not only to save that ten grand, but even more. And so I think that's a, that's a, that's a good way for us to spend the taxpayers' money, you know, and still keep our employees well benefited. So.
Yeah, puts us in a good position to be competitive in the future, because we, we control the benefits of our plan. And so if there are things that we would like to alter, or if we find out that, uh, say we have good utilization of generic drugs, we can lower the cost, the copay cost for that, because we run that plan. So, uh, you know, if we find different ways in the future to do that, we'll at least have money and flexibility to do it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve a proposed health insurance renewal with Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Kansas and the F C M I. Can't remember.
Freedom Claims.
Freedom Claims Management, Inc. and authorize the mayor to sign.
Make up motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three oh. We'll now to agenda item five, which is Elcon invoices. Mr. Styles.
Sir, so we've got two here today. One was for materials for the Scheffler House and for the rec department, mostly just some, some basic kind of stuff there. And then we also had one, uh, excuse me, that one, that first invoices for eighty three dollars and twenty four cents. Uh, and then the second one, we had them doing some work out at the water treatment plant. So that was a little bit of, there's quite a bit more labor involved with that one. And some other things for, uh, just from tracer wire for the, for the water department. They helped demo some old materials and provide some new stuff in one of our blowers. So it ended up being a little bit larger, uh, larger thing. And then we also had, it looks like a, a filter, uh, one of the switches over on the, one of the filters too. So that second one, the second invoice total was five hundred and forty six dollars and twenty cents, which gets us to a grand total of six hundred and twenty nine dollars and forty four cents.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve payment of Elcon invoices totaling six hundred and twenty nine dollars, forty four cents. Somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Okay.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor say aye. All those abstaining?
Abstain.
All those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you very much. I guess technically, Renee, you could, uh, you could second the motion and still abstain. So.
Technically.
You know, technically you wouldn't, that wouldn't be, because you're not, you're still abstaining, so you can carry it forward to a vote with your second, but.
That's true.
Anyway, we're now on to agenda item six, senior government class projects. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So Mayor Thurston, Anthony Roy and myself all participated in reviewing presentations to improve Hillsborough from the government, senior government class, Mr. Canole's senior government class. There are two classes, ten total presentations. I thought they're all, they all did a really good job. I was hoping that maybe we'd have an opportunity, you know, maybe not this year, obviously, because of the timing. This is, I think this is the seniors' last day today. So, uh, I don't anticipate any of them showing up for this particular presentation, but there were some really cool ideas and I thought that we should bring those up and kind of share them with everybody and let them know that some of these things are actually part of their strategic planning process. We've talked about some of them. We've actually done some work on a few of them. So, um, you know, we really have three, three kind of categories downtown area. So we got some main street beautification things, a mural project, some flower, a flower project, parks and trails was one, uh, the park restroom, which is something that I know needs to be improved. Light the loop, which is one that increased the, the lighting within the loop of the tra, of the park area to, to light that up a little bit better for safety and for other reasons. Mini golf, someone wanted to install a mini golf over there by the, where we'll be by the scout house is kind of what they, location they scouted. That's a little bit outside of what we would probably do, but it might be an interesting entrepreneurial project for somebody. We'd certainly work with whomever if they wanted to do that.
I think they had one in town years ago.
That's what somebody was saying.
They did, and it was right there where that scout house is.
So, you know, there's history there, there's precedence. Maybe, maybe that makes sense for some of them, so.
The bear concrete.
Yeah, that was a long time. That's pretty rough. Well, you know, maybe there's somebody out there who wants to run a mini golf and we'd be happy to. I don't know if the city wants to get into that, but.
I think they had a go kart track too.
Yeah, we did have a go kart.
Yeah. That'd really get us going there.
Remember watching some guys tumble through some hay and straw bales on the corners.
Sounds like there's an opportunity for somebody. Uh, welcome sign proposal. We've actually talked about that too, pretty extensively. The one, the one that drives me the most nuts is the one over here by the golf course. It's, it's pretty rough, uh, getting kind of overgrown. So we've actually talked about tearing that out and doing something different. So, uh, the, the proposal here was actually for out on fifty six though, uh, to replace our reader board sign that's out there, uh, which I don't think anyone would complain about on the city staff. It's kind of a pain to, to get out there and change it. But new welcome signs would be something that'd be great. And of course, the Orchard Drive sidewalk project, we've got a K doc grant, active K doc grant for that one. So, um, they're kind of right on our minds on that one. Uh, and then there were a couple that were really more school related things. So there's a crossing guard proposal, which would be over here on A and Adam Street. There's an issue with kids running, running through that intersection and high school traffic. And so, uh, I think at one point they did have a crossing guard there and, you know, that person has retired or has, has moved on and so they don't have anybody to do it anymore. But that one really kind of falls more with the school. We would have, be happy to assist, but I, you know, we can't put a police officer down there every day, because we just don't have that ability. After the bell was one that was a student activity center, and I think that would, they, they looked at using the old QuickFlix building here on Main Street. So that might be, might be something that, uh, again, that would really fall to the district to do something, but, uh, you know, it could be something that could be done. But the ones that I think that are really interesting are, are the, the main street beautification ones. We've talked about that, I guess, at this, the council level at some point in the past, not too, not too distant past, uh, as far as I know. That's something that could be done, you know, why? The projects themselves called for volunteer labor. Um, I, I have found in the past that that works maybe for a little bit, but it really is something that you'd have to assign a city person to do, probably to make sure that it gets taken care of. So those are some things that, you know, I think we could do. Uh, the mural one is a great idea too. I'm not sure cost wise if, uh, we're in the ballpark on that, but, um, you know, it might be kind of a cool thing to add some, add some features to downtown. Talked about park benches as well. And, uh, you know, those, those are some things that kind of fit into our strategic plan that would be fairly easy to implement. So, um, just thought I'd share those with you. I, I really enjoy, I was really impressed by all the, the ideas and, uh, I'm happy to hear that our strategic planning kind of file, falls in line with some of that stuff that we're not so far out of, out of whack with some of those people that, uh, it, it all kind of meshed up together. So, um, you know, wanted to give that an opportunity for you guys to hear those. And I don't know, Mayor, if you have something to say about the, the presentations.
Well, I actually wasn't able to be there. I had a, a family emergency and, and had to be down in Texas. My, uh, little sister passed away, so I was got to be down there with her and that was where I needed to be, but, uh, wasn't able to make it back in time for the presentations. Uh, I did, uh, was involved with a couple of the groups as they did their research. And this is the third year that Mr. Canole has done this project with his seniors and each year it just continues to get better. And the students, you know, get more refined with their, uh, with their approaches and, and, you know, I've taken feedback that we've provided from prior years, you know, and, and incorporated, and new classes are incorporating that feedback into their, into their, uh, into their proposals. And I think each year we're going to, you know, I hope we can keep this going, because, you know, it's, it's, I think we're going to see, you know, continue to see stuff percolate up and, and I think it's, you know, it's a great way to involve our youth in the community and get them thinking about community and, you know, and what it means to be part of a community. So, so I thought the proposals were, were, uh, you know, again, overall, you know, very, very well done. And, and, uh, one of the things that, that I've stressed is if you're going to bring a proposal before a governing body, you need to have certain things. And one of the most important ones is a decent cost estimate, because a lot of things are possible, but not everything is practical, you know, when it comes down to financing. So, you know, so it's nice to see that, you know, m- most of these people did a pretty, pretty solid job about trying to come up with a, what, some idea of what, what it might cost. So, uh, you know, and that's something that they're going to, that they can learn and take forward, you know, in their, in their own personal lives. I mean, you know, obviously you have to have a budget and, you know, know where your money's coming from, et cetera. So, yeah. So no, I think these are, these are all, these are all good things and, you know, again, everything is, everything on here is possible, but maybe not everything is practical, you know, and at, at least for now.
Sure.
But I would encourage us to, uh, to look at some of these and, and, and maybe, uh, Matt, you could, uh, you could maybe, uh, take, take a, a group of your team and kind of go through some of these things and see what you think might be worthy to bring back for the council, you know, in terms of moving forward with. So.
Yeah.
There might be one or two that, that we could get started with. And I think if we start doing that too, we'll see some more excitement. And, you know, if we decide to do something, I would, uh, I would love to, uh, maybe encourage Mr. Canole to do this, uh, earlier in the year instead of later.
Yeah.
So we could involve the students a little more in, in, in the process.
Yeah, he and I had a conversation about that. And I think that next year, we'll see him a little earlier and maybe even have a situation where we can have him in here for a, a council presentation. So, um, yeah, sorry about that. I, I forgot that you weren't at the thing, but had you had given a presentation, I know you've talked to the students, um, last year and Anthony did the same thing and I did the same thing this spring. So I think they did a really good job of, of grabbing hold of some of those, some of that advice. And I know I personally talked to four of those projects on, you know, helping them with cost estimating. So, you know, I think that they're, I think Lou's exactly right. They've gotten a little bit more refined and, uh, did really well with it. So we'll take, we'll take a look at some of these. I think the ones, uh, that involve Main Street, we, like I say, we've had that conversation in the past.
I like the, I like the lighting down in the park too.
Yeah, I think that one.
You know, and making that a little more secure. I think that, uh, that, that, that's again, another one that, that could fall within some of these, uh, some of these other parameters that we have, um, you know, possibly involving some of this money that's coming in as well. So.
Yeah, potentially so.
You know, be good stuff.
Yeah. That's all I had on that, unless somebody had some questions.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is city manager, or city administrator, excuse me, evaluation.
Yeah, thank you, sir. So I've got, uh, I printed out a paper copy of it, um, so you guys can take a look at it. But if there's anything that we needed to adjust with it, since you've had a couple of weeks to look at it, let me know. Want to kind of get it approved so that we can move forward with it, do the, do the actual evaluation. We're going to use this, something similar to this for the employees. It's a three sixty evaluation, so they're going to get a chance to review me too. And then you'll get that information. So maybe that will help you with some of your stuff as well. So I know there's a few categories on here that you may not have a lot of experience on, uh, dealing with me on. So if those things, it, it would probably be helpful to have that input from the, the other staff before you really do those sections. But I just wanted to get a, if, you know, some feedback on it, if there's anything we need to change, or if you don't think there's something in there that, or if there's something missing you'd like to see, uh, be happy to make those changes.
So as you're, they evaluate them, how, how is, are people are evaluated? How is it then going to be used? I mean, um, is there going to be some correction going on? Is there going to be some words of wisdom from someone that how to improve these things? Or how does, what's it going to be used for when it comes down to it?
Well, hopefully we can use that feedback to be constructive and, and change a few things. I don't like to.
Be encouraged. I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, if it's, it can be misused too, where it's.
Sure.
You don't, if you don't answer, you get any good answers on this, you're just going to have to hit the road. I don't like that idea at all. I think that's a proper use of it.
Yeah.
I think it's more corrective. I mean, hey, let's talk about this. Is this an area that you really feel that way about yourself too?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I think the word development comes to mind.
Yeah.
It's a way to develop employees and.
Yeah.
And develop their skills, develop their interests, you know? And, you know, sometimes it may, may mean, you know, making some adjustments, you know, in terms of what their role may or may not be. But, but again, it's always for their development. I mean, you know, and, and improvement. I mean, you know, that's really what it is. And, you know, I've, I've, uh, been dealing with, uh, performance evaluations, giving them and getting them for many, many years. And, uh, you know, the process, uh, you know, it, at one time or another has been good and then I've been through some really bad ones in terms of it was just a formality and people were checking boxes and it really wasn't helpful, you know, to, to, to anybody's development mine or anybody else's. So, you know, I think if we go at it with the attitude that we're helping to develop, continue, the continued development of, of our personnel and, and, uh, and in this case, Matt, you know, in terms of our participation in this process, you know, I think, you know, you don't have to, none, we're all imperfect people, so it's not a perfect process, but it gives us an opportunity to help develop the relationship and develop that.
The reason I ask those questions is because I used to teach the class on how to make these kinds of.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, so it's.
Yeah.
It's not because I'm trying to be critical, I just.
No, I did, I never, I didn't take it that way.
I know that assessments are sometimes thrown out there and then they're not used for anything, so.
Right.
Right. You know, it's, it's kind of a waste of time and waste of energy. And sometimes, uh, if, if they're not used correctly, they can be very defeating.
Sure.
For some.
Right, I get it.
Depending on the personality of the person it has to take them to, especially these kinds of things can be, you know.
Yeah.
Some people are highly critical of themselves anyway.
Well, sure.
Makes it really hard for them. So.
Yeah.
I've been deflated in the process before. So, you know, and it wasn't even so much the results. It was just the way it was gone about.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah. I like the five categories you have. I think it's explained very well above with the different levels of excellent, of average. Sometimes those words don't mean anything, but I like the fact that you explained what it was. And fact that there are five choices, sometimes I would almost eliminate the middle one.
Yeah.
Too easy to mark average, but.
That is true. When we developed surveys, that was always, that was always the question. Should we put that one in there?
So I think about that, whether you want to add a sixth one or just get rid of the middle one or whatever, just a thought. The other piece of it too is that, like I, like you said, we won't have had enough experiment, experience to answer some of these. So, and maybe there should be a little box to check that I don't, don't know.
Don't know? Yeah.
Just because there's some I don't think I could honestly answer on some people. So.
Yeah.
Or. Same problem. I get jacks every year. And there was some things in there I always had to put not applicable because I had no idea.
No, no, yeah.
What do you do with the city clerk sometimes?
Sure. Yeah, that's no problem. We can add that.
So those are. I think that's a good, that's a good call.
Yeah, we'll add that in. That's no problem at all. That makes a lot of sense because there are some of these things that I, you know, in reading through them again and again, you probably wouldn't be able to answer a while.
As a city council member, I wouldn't be able to answer.
Yeah.
A lot of cases.
I agree with you. That's true.
Fair enough. Any other things you want to add, subtract?
You know.
Oh, we've got something in there not covered that, you know, we don't know.
Yeah. We have open boxes too. So you can always write comments in there if you feel like there's something that we're not catching.
That's good.
Yeah. Emerald is good.
There might be.
Is there any place where we're encouraged to, 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 to give a word of encouragement to?
Okay. No, not specifically.
Yeah. Constructive suggestions are can be, you know, can be kind of critical sometimes, but is there something positive that?
Sure.
That we could write, a place for writing something like that that suggests that this is not just.
Not just being critical. Sure. Yep.
I'm wondering if there isn't also an opportunity to to connect this to our strategic plan.
Yeah.
You know, are we working, making progress? We're working towards that?
Sure.
Somewhere.
Yeah, we can add some questions on that.
Because, you know, I start to, I start to see it kind of coming together, at least for me. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but you know, I obviously I brought it up in the conversation with Butler County, but you know, as we, you know, that was the purpose as we talked about as we had the meeting with the guy from Colorado. Hometown. The guy that led our first meeting when Larry was still here. At Tabor, when we met at Tabor. On the strategic planning.
Yeah.
So, you know, one of the things that he talked about is, you know, developing that then, then as you start to think about all these other things, you know, and we talked about it with the kids, the students' proposals. You know, again, we start seeing how that fits into our strategic plan, right? And so that just, I think, kind of helps keep our thinking guided, you know, and not have us all out. As a, as a guy I used to work for with our butterfly nets chasing butterflies, you know, we're focused in on, on what we said was our priorities, right? And so as we're talking about these things, well, how does that fit in our, to our priorities? And so we've had a number of things again on the agenda today and in our conversations that we've tied back to our strategic planning conversations and development. So, I think, you know, I think at some point we ought to, you know, as we get that done, you know, we, that's something that all the city employees should be very aware of what the strategic plan is and, you know, and what our priorities are and you know, that's going to help them as they go about their daily work, I would think.
Yeah.
Understanding how what they're doing fits into those things.
Offense, yeah.
So, um, so on the evaluation, I know sometimes on evaluations, the person themselves fills out some of how they feel like, do you feel like that would?
Do a self eval. I would be happy to do that. Yeah. I actually have kind of done it in my head already. So, yeah, I wouldn't, I would, I would be happy to share that with you. I'm one of those people like Dave says, it's a little bit harder on themselves probably than. But, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Any other comments or questions? Is this giving you some feedback?
That is exactly what I needed.
Okay.
Be able to tie that all together and we'll get that out to you guys. I can do the self evaluation part pretty easily and then we'll kind of go from there and I'll get you the, we'll get it out to the employees too. So you can see that as part of this process. So, yeah, we should be able to get it ended up and the actual date for the evaluation would probably be that second meeting in June. And we would probably, probably want to do that one in an executive session, I would think. So.
Yep. Okay. All right.
Good work, Matt.
Yeah.
Good.
Sure.
And now move on to agenda item F, board appointments. And I do have a board appointment today. And that is to the Hillsborough Housing Authority. And Ron Motts has agreed to serve on the Hillsborough Housing Authority. And his name has been put forward by, by the group and by Gail, the executive director. And so I present Ron's name for your consideration. Would somebody care to make a motion to approve Ron to the Hillsborough Housing Authority? That's Councilman McCarty's motion. Second by Councilman Gerring. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three O. Ron Motts is now appointed to the Hillsborough Housing Authority. You know what? I may have one other. I'm sorry. Let me, I've been a little just combated here. So. Okay, we did, we have one other. I'm sorry. I knew I was missing something. This is for the library board. And this is Catherine Sabian. Name has been brought forward to, to join our Hillsborough Public Library Board. And Catherine will take the position that's being vacated by Mara Weeby, who has resigned and they are in the process of relocating to the East Coast. So, she's retired from teaching and.
She's an excellent choice.
And so would somebody care to make that motion? The name of Catherine Sabian to serve on the Hillsborough Public Library Board of Trustees. Any questions for the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Catherine is approved. Okay, I think that is it. Thank you very much. Hey, we have our city administrators report, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir. So a new website and front desk is going to launch at the end of, or on the 21st, so the end of the week. So we're moving, we're going to be putting out a lot of information about front desk and how to transition over from ACH into a new system. It's gonna insert in the June bills. We're going to do a video showing people how to set up their, their account. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a good, good, good upgrade, I think, for the city. And I think people ultimately are going to be a lot happier with the options that they have. Credit card payment changes, we're going to move forward with that too, is kind of part of this. So we're looking at July 1st to stop taking those over the phone. You know, we'll still talk to people and we're going to try to encourage them and try to be as nice as possible about it. So, you still have all the options to pay in person, cash check, credit card in person. And then, of course, you can drop off your payments or mail them in, or you can go to front desk. So we're trying to get people moving in that direction. I think the website launch will be really cool too. I think it's gonna look pretty nice. I think it turned out pretty good. And we'll have all of that launched on Friday. Credit card payment, oh, excuse me, I said that one. The Recovery American Rescue Plan Act, I keep getting it wrong, ARPA. We're still kind of working through the guidance on that. The advice was to kind of take our time. I think I mentioned that in previous, when we talked about the wastewater lagoon. So, we'll want to be patient with that and make sure that we do things correctly. I put in a legislative, there's the change in the legislature through the House, House Bill two, two, geez, please, House Bill 214, 2014 and Senate Bill 13, which is going to imply, impact our budgeting process for 2022. So the tax lid got repealed, but it's replaced with this hearing requirement for revenue neutral, which I'm not sure I hundred percent understand how that calculation works just yet. But we'll work through that part when we get through to the budget. So there's an infographic there. So if you have questions about it, I will, I'm gonna have to study up on it a little bit more and then I can hopefully answer this for you. We're going to start our budget process and, you know, talking at the council level on, at the next meeting, actually, June 1st. And then target kind of going through till we have to have it passed by August 25th. But this law will change a little bit of that. And so we'll have to kind of navigate that together. Anytime the legislature makes a change like that and it impacts you right away, it's always a little bit wonky with the handoff on how that works, but we'll, we'll get through it and we'll make sure everything happens as it should. Strategic planning, as Mayor was talking about that. So I've, I've got, I attached a review of kind of what we came out with, of the current vision statement. So Hillsborough is a prairie community focused on people, places and progress. Pretty simple, easy to remember. The value statements there, the prairie, we embrace our prairie values, which is the importance of family, lifelong learning, strong work ethic, resiliency to meet challenges, respect for the past and vision for the future. Those all tie together nice and neat. I like how that came out. And then I've got the goals as, as the mayor talked about, our top three. Our childcare, housing and workforce. I put them in alphabetical order. They're not in any particular order. Hey, Jonah. So those are the tier one goals. And then the tier two stuff that we have, they're, they're important as well, but they're maybe not as, as critical to, to the development of the community. Well, they are critical. I shouldn't say that, but they're not the ones we're going to be spending the most time and focus on. We have city planning, which includes updating some of our zoning codes, subdivision rags, comp plan, that kind of thing. Community development, which actually does work really well with some of those other things as well. It's about building a better community, a community of choice where people want to be. And so we've got community plaza in there and the gigabyte fiber, trails, all those things that kind of make it a nice place to be and a nice place to live in. And then we had financial stability. Those are really our targets for making sure that we're fiscally sound and stable. And then we also had public safety, which includes the EMS building. And then also the public safety building, which we're targeting in a couple of years to look at doing. So those, that's kind of where it sits right now. We can have some, some revision on that. It's obviously not formal yet. I was planning on sending it out to the group that's been working on it and then seeing if we want to do another meeting. Or if we're good with where it's at, there's a little bit of work yet to do, but I think it's in a good spot where it is.
I was gonna say, may I make a comment or do you want me to wait?
Go for it.
Council comments.
Go for it.
Just on further reflection on the workforce portion down at the bottom where it says research opportunities to bring in workforce, it says expanding the use of incarcerated labor.
Yeah.
And like I said, just on further reflection, you know, one of our goals is to have increased population, you know, and to bring families in and just putting myself, you know, in their shoes. I wonder if that might deter families from feeling like this is a safe community to move into. So, so I just wanted to.
Yeah.
To throw my thoughts out there.
Sure.
Out there on that one.
Yeah, that, that term incarcerated labor is kind of a, it's kind of scary.
I don't know. That's just, it's just the term. I'm just wondering if that's something that we really, we really want for, for our community.
Yeah, it's certainly something we need to think through pretty thoroughly. I would agree. I know we, I think the context for that was that Barkman uses prison labor, right? That, that's right. So that was kind of, is there an opportunity for that? So, yeah, I mean, I not married to that by any stretch of the imagination. So we can, we can talk about that a little bit more. And then, then there may be some more things we need to open up and have more discussion on too.
I don't mind, you know, thinking that we should probably have another meeting, you know, this summer, you know, maybe, maybe tied in with, with budget work session.
Yeah.
You know, that might be good timing. And, you know, as we're talking about these things and looking at the budget for next year, you know, there might be some good tie in and we can clean some of this up. But at some point I'd like to, like to gussy the, gussy it up a little bit graphically, you know,
Right, sure.
and come up with a way to incorporate, start incorporating those, those things into our, you know, like we have here with our logo, etc. You know, and maybe start thinking about some of that stuff too.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think the, the key thing with the strategic plan is that you don't let it sit on the shelf, right? If it collects dust, it's pretty worthless. We got a lot of, we got a lot of stuff collecting dust. We don't need anymore. So, anytime we can tie it back and make it active, I think is a really good thing.
Well, I think, you know, that, that again, we need to, as, as we're, there's several points in the, in the year, maybe two or three times we need to be, have this out as we're, as we're thinking about things or planning, doing any kind of planning. And it's got a, you know, whatever we're doing should be tied to this. Or if it's not on this list, you know, if it's important enough, then it needs to be added. You know, and if it's something that needs to be taken off, then it needs to be taken off. But it's a dynamic document. It's not a static document.
Absolutely. Okay, community plaza, speaking of strategic planning elements, community plaza, we're, we've been moving forward with that. Had a lot of, had a lot of discussion with a lot of different people internally and then with an architect on how to use the shipping containers, EBH on the grading plan, and then the splash park people on how to get stuff ordered and start designing that piece of the pie, that piece of the pie. So, I'm not exactly sure how all this is going to work and put together, but I'm pretty confident that we can get something in the ground that will be, will be consistent with what we've talked about. And I think we can get it in there yet this year. I'm not saying the whole thing in phase one will be finished, but we'll have a good start and we'll, you know, we'll definitely have some progress to show for people. The night, we have 1930, I don't know if you know this or not, but we had a 1936 International Wheat Truck that was donated to the museum several years ago by Abe Dahl. And it's, it's, we rarely use it. It's just not something that's super consistent with what we've been using in the museum. And so we actually pay to store it every month. And I don't think the last time we got it out was probably a couple of years ago. We actually have a hard time maintaining it as well. So they've asked for, well, the family has asked for that back to go over to the Wheat Heritage Engine and Threshing Company in Gossel. And so they've requested that back. I have no problems giving that back to them. I think if they're going to actively use it, which they intend to do when the Threshing Days Parade and putting it on and at the museum and stuff. So, we're gonna transfer that over to them unless somebody has a serious objection about that. I don't, I didn't see any issues with it necessarily. If anybody else does or not.
How does Steve Fast feel about it?
Steve is actually the one who
Recommended it.
Recommended it. So it's, we actually own three automobiles and they don't get a ton of use. So, I think that rather than see them rust in one of our storage sheds, it's better to give them back to somebody to, to use. So. The KP pay bill, I put that in there for you guys to look at too. So the storm charge, really what we're interested in talking about is probably the storm surcharge. It was sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-one or fifteen dollars and eighty-one cents for April. I got the total charge on there. So you can kind of see what that bill looks like just for comparison sake. April of 2020, the city bill was ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-five. So we're up quite a bit. We sold quite a bit more electricity or purchased quite a bit more electricity this year than we did last, April of last year. So, I'm going to continue to put those out there for you guys. So you can see them. If you have any questions about the, how the bill gets figured, I, I can try to answer those for you or we can get somebody from KPP to, to answer those for you. And then the last thing, Jan Mysingers Retirement Party set for Friday, June 11th, four, six p.m. here at City Hall. So, everybody's welcome to come to that. It should be a real, a real good time. good time, so that's the last one we're going to have for a little while. Till the end of the year, so.
Promise.
Uh, that's as far as I know. Yeah. Uh, that's it for right now, and so that's all I had, sir, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Stiles? The only comment I will make is, uh, uh, I don't know if it seems like it to anybody else, but we got a lot of stuff going on and really a lot of good stuff going on in Hillsborough and and, uh, you know, it's, it's, there's, there's always more to to do. There's always something, one more thing that we could, that we can be working on, but I've been very pleased with the, uh, with the, uh, progress that we've made here this this year on a lot of these projects and very excited. I think, Matt, you still have a trail gate party to to plan, to have the grand opening for the trail, but.
Yeah.
We'll have a date on that here shortly.
It's, uh, it's exciting and, uh, you know, to see the work out there and then to see the work at at container services and and the, uh, the, uh, feed mill and the highway project and there just, you know, just a lot of stuff, a lot of good stuff going on, so. Also, uh, you know, would probably be remiss to, uh, to, for the city to offer our congratulations to all the twenty twenty one graduates of Tabor College and Hillsborough High School. So, uh, let the record state that the city council, the city of Hillsborough offers our congratulations to all of our graduates and, uh, excited, uh, for their futures and hopefully some of them will decide to make those futures right here in Hillsborough. So. Look forward to that. Okay, at this point, we're now to council comments, and so I will poll the council. Councilman Gerring.
I just want to offer my condolences on your family loss.
Oh, sure, thank you, yeah, thank you very much. Mr. McCarty.
I'd, uh, actually like to see us, like the loop proposal looked pretty good if we could ever come up with the money, I think that would be a really good project down there. I think these kids put some effort into that and that's a really good idea.
I think so too. And, uh, you know, there's a, there's a safety issue there, you know, community safety issue that, uh, that, uh, that that I feel like could could be addressed through that project and, you know. In some respects, you know, I hate the idea that we have cameras everywhere, but at the same time, you know, it really helps law enforcement, you know, when you're trying to figure out, you know, who did what to to whom and, you know, it it and and, you know, follow up on on stuff. So, you know, I think, uh, lighting and and camera, you know, will will help, cameras will help us keep, keep the area safer, you know, especially at nighttime, you know, and and, you know, maybe not so much in the summer when the days are long, but certainly in the fall and and winter and early spring, you know, it's dark early and, you know, we want, we want those areas to be as safe as we can make them. Anything else? Or any?
No.
Okay.
I was looking at this last year.
No worries. Councilman Lowen.
Not anything, Ed. Just keep, let's keep moving forward, I like all that stuff we got going on.
That's it, keep going. Keep moving. Um. I know he wasn't here during the public comment section, but we have a county commissioner present and, uh, now Commissioner Gerring, I'd give you the opportunity, if you have anything you'd like to bring to the council.
I just, uh, we're going to have a special meeting tomorrow, um, dealing with EMS. Already talked to Matt. But we gotta make a move because building prices are going up.
Sure.
Just wanted to re-stress, I said, that's my area, I'll go take care of it.
We will get that over to you, we've been working on that, Kimberland's got that and we're, uh, trying to figure out if we need to have some kind of agreement in place with that as well, so.
Yeah, but, and then I just, key on his point over there, we've got a lot of good people here, law abiding citizens don't care about cameras and lights, so, put them all up.
I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, that's true, you know, law abiding citizens don't care.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even think about them, I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, other than the the four way stop at D Street Nash, I couldn't tell you where any cameras were down anyway, so.
Actually caught the guys that broke into the pharmacy, you know, cameras, because they put the tag in the thing and grabbed some, it was amazing how you can use that stuff, maybe it's almost too much sometimes.
And they weren't from here. They weren't from here.
They weren't from.
All right, anything else? Okay, well, thanks, appreciate you being here. Okay, any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.